All right, I think it's officially time here. Good morning and welcome to this October 24th meeting of the Planning Commission. Thank you for being here. And if you would all please stand and join me in a flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Sue.
Yes, good morning. Mr. Cannon.
Here.
Mr. Hersog is absent. Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Nader.
Here.
Mr. Haugie.
Here.
Mr. Sevison.
Here.
Mr. Moss.
Here.
Thank you.
EJ, report from the Planning Director, please.
Good morning. EJ Avaldi with the Planning Services Division. It's been, it's been awhile since we've met. Sixty-three days, in fact, just in case you weren't counting. I count.
What's your name?
I just, I just told you my name. So, let's see, this morning, a few things we need to do. I need to update you on some recent board meeting actions, discuss upcoming Planning Commission agendas, especially for the next couple of months. And then, but right now, I want to provide you on some staffing updates and planning because things change over time. Most of you know Alan Bruch. In September, Alan retired from the county after 21 years of service. Alan was, he was originally hired, if you remember, Larry probably remembers, long ago as a code enforcement with the county, and then kind of worked his way up to supervising planner. Worked on a ton of projects up in Tahoe, probably most notably was a Homewood Mountain Master Plan. So anyway, so, I wanted to thank Alan publicly for his service, even though he's well into retirement now, still remaining in the Tahoe area for now, but I wouldn't be surprised to see him head out of state at some point. So anyway, although we won't, you know, we won't be able to replace Alan, we are going to be doing a recruitment for another senior planner up in the Tahoe office, so we're hopefully going to do that fairly soon. The agency is also recruiting for a new deputy director position up in Tahoe that would oversee the entire SEDRA division. The application filing period, I think, ended just last week, and so I'm sure they'll be setting up interviews fairly soon on that. And then, here in Auburn, I'm excited to announce that we recently hired Kelly Boyle. Kelly, there's a lot of people here, so I won't make her stand up.
Welcome.
Anyway, she's a new assistant planner. She comes to us by way of Analytical Environmental Sciences, where she was an environmental analyst working on preparation of CEQA and NEPA documents, and managing water right projects. She has a bachelor's from Cal State University Chico, and a master's in environmental science from the University of Auckland, New Zealand. And there, she specialized in water-sensitive urban design and stormwater management. Right now, she's going to be working on the current planning team under Alex Fish, so we're extremely happy to have you here. So, thank you. And then, another person here, and she didn't think I was going to introduce her today, but Rebecca Hope. She's our newest Civic Spark Fellow, fellow, right? I said that right? Not an intern, but a fellow, which we've been able to do over the past couple of years. She'll be helping our housing team on housing-related matters. We have another fellow that was also started at the same time, so we'll be, hopefully at the next meeting, I'll have both of them here and talk a little bit more about that. So, moving on. Recent board meetings. So, in the last couple of months, we had a few, just a few planning items. On September 24th, the Board approved the Granite Bay Congregate Living Health Facility as recommended by your commission. That was that 18-bedroom residential care home, and also included a rezone. On October 8th, the Board approved the establishment of a new 40-acre ag preserve located out in Lincoln off of Critter Creek Road. And then, this past Tuesday in Tahoe, the Board provided input on a proposed short-term rental vacation rental ordinance. This ordinance is intended to strike the balance of reducing neighborhood nuisances like noise and parking that's typically related to these short-term rentals. And so, that should be going back to the Board on November 5th, the ordinance itself for adoption. Tim Wagner, who's here today, he's going to be giving that overview of the Building Services Division and all that they do, will probably provide a little more information on that short-term rental ordinance. So now, let's talk about Planning Commission's schedule. So, there are two regularly scheduled meetings before the end of the year, November 14th and December 12th. I'm going to be asking your commission to add a additional meeting each month, which would be November 21st for a special meeting, and December 5th. November 21st would be to consider the Sunset Area Plan and Plaster Ranch Specific Plan. And then, December 5th may be a Tahoe meeting. It's not quite decided if we're going to be doing Tahoe on December 5th or December 12th, but we'll definitely be going up to Tahoe in December. Some of the things that I know are going to happen before the end of the year, the Plaster County Sustainability Plan, that will be a December item before your commission. We're also going to be doing a, just an update on the recent housing legislation that the governor signed, just to kind of give you an overview of, you know, all the changes, especially to accessory dwelling units. The Winery and Farm Brewery Ordinance, you'll probably see that in January. We're trying to separate these out, just to give, you know, the community time to read through all these documents and be prepared, as well as your commission. And then, the other notable projects, the Plaster County Conservation Plan, that may be December, it may be January, when that comes before your commission. Same with the Hidden Falls Park Expansion. I believe the draft EIR is set to be released here, probably within the next 30 days. Once we know of a date, then we'll schedule that for a draft EIR meeting with your commission. Lot of other smaller-scale projects, extensions of time, that we'll be filling in on the agenda around these other projects. So, with that, I'm sure there's at least one question.
Questions?
Actually, did you say both the 12th and the 5th may be in Tahoe?
No, so just one. We'll have one Tahoe meeting. Right now, it's anticipated to be December 5th, but I'll update you probably at the next meeting on that. And we'll have that on the agenda for your official approval of those meetings on November 14th. And I think that's all I have.
No other questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
That would be the time for public comment. This would be to comment on anything that is not on today's agenda, or anybody wishing to address the commission. Seeing none, close that, and move on to the consent agenda. Is there any items on the consent agenda that the? Motion and a second. Roll call.
Which one was it? I couldn't vote on A?
Yeah.
A.
Okay, I have a first by Commissioner Nader and a second by Commissioner Haugie for approval of the action agenda. Could I have a vote for Mr. Cannon, please?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog is absent. Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Nader.
Yes.
Mr. Haugie.
Yes.
Mr. Sevison.
Mr. King.
Mr. Moss.
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, onto item B. And again, is there anybody from the public that would, wants to hear this separately or anything? Seeing none?
I move approval of item B.
Have a motion? Second? Second.
Okay, I have a first from Mr. Nader, a second by Mr. Haugie, so a vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Nader.
Yes.
Mr. Haugie.
Yes.
Mr. Sevison.
Yes.
Mr. Moss.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, now on to our 10:05 item. We're good on time.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Delaney Farnham with Planning Services Division. Today, we have for you a subdivision map modification for Lot 72 of the residence at Granite Bay Golf Club. The project is located at 520 Ojai, which is just west of the East Roseville Parkway and Barton Road intersection in the Granite Bay area. A property zone, residential, single-family, combining agriculture, combining minimum build site of 40,000 square feet with a PD of 1.1. The Residence at Granite Bay Golf Club subdivision was originally approved in July of 1993. The subdivision is a 180-acre site that comprises of 72 residential lots, an 18-hole golf course, driving range, and clubhouse. The final map was recorded in 1996. The applicant is requesting a subdivision map modification for Lot 72 to abandon a portion of a conservation easement located along the eastern property line, and to update the location of the mapped 100-year floodplain. The conservation easements run along the Linda Creek corridor throughout the subdivision. Most of these easements are located south of East Roseville Parkway, within the golf course area. There is a small portion of conservation easement located north of East Roseville Parkway, just along the eastern property of Lot 72. So, these easements were granted to the county, and they were never accepted. So, what we see now is that we have Lot 72. The green line here indicates the conservation easement area, and then the blue dash line is showing the mapped 100-year floodplain. Within the conservation easement area, there has been disturbance within the area since the initial development of the subdivision. We have a cobblestone sound wall that was installed with the improvement plans of the subdivision, and when the lot was initially developed in 2004, there has been domestic landscaping throughout the conservation easement area. So, the picture here on the left indicates, shows the eastern property line, and it's also showing that sound wall, the cobblestone sound wall located here. The picture on the right is showing the southeast corner of the property. That area has been maintained with domestic landscaping as well. So, the purpose of these conservation easements was to protect and preserve delineated wetlands, valley elderberry longhorn beetle habitat, riparian and oak woodland habitat, and wildlife. The map shows the original locations of the elderberry shrubs in 1992. We had a biologist survey the conservation easement area of Lot 72 in September, and confirm that no, no velp habitat or species were present within Lot 72. So, development on this lot began in 2004. These aerial images show the initial development of Lot 72, which shows that the conservation easement area has been disturbed with some flatwork and some domestic landscaping. Looking at the 2018 aerial imagery, we can see that the conditions are similar, which reflect that this easement has never functioned to conserve or preserve sensitive habitat or species over the last 15 years. Now, looking into the floodplain, the initial development of the subdivision in 1992 mapped the floodplain as a future unmitigated, fully-developed floodplain. Today, we have 2018 FEMA data. With that data, we see that the 100-year floodplain located here, outlined in blue, shows that the floodplain is almost completely located off-site. We do have a corner up here, in the northeast corner, that shows a portion of the floodplain crossing property boundaries. However, the FEMA data only shows current conditions, and is sort of a snapshot in time. And this does not show the limits of the future unmitigated, fully-developed floodplain. So, in order for the applicant to update the floodplain, we would require them to do a hydrologic study performed by a registered civil engineer, which would show the limits of the future unmitigated, fully-developed floodplain. And then, they would be able to record a certificate of correction on the map. So, as it stands, we can't rely fully on the FEMA data, but this might be an indication that, yes, if you were to map out with a hydrological survey, there's a chance that the floodplain may be mapped off-site. So, as staff looking at the project, we would recommend the Planning Commission find the project categorically exempt from environmental review, and approve the request for a subdivision map modification to allow for the abandonment of a portion of the conservation easement located along the eastern property line, and to update the location of the 100-year floodplain, subject to the findings and conditions found in the staff report. And I'm available for any questions.
Questions?
Delaney, is there any breaks in that fence so that water can come through?
Yes, I'll go back. So, for the wall, the cobble wall ends right about there. Fencing does continue along here, but it is open like iron fencing.
Oh, all right. Thank you.
Let me see, the conservation easement was never accepted by the county? What's the significance of that?
If we were to have accepted that easement, we would have rights to maintain the easement. As it stands, the easement is granted in perpetuity to the county, but we have yet to accept it. So, at this point, there's an easement that is recorded, it is there, but there's really nobody there maintaining it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
What were the conditions of approval for maintenance of that easement, if not the county, but for landowners?
There was really no conditions for maintaining, other than no disturbance within the conservation easement. It was supposed to remain as sort of a open space corridor along the Linda Creek. And for the most part, most of these easement areas located here is within the golf course area, which does kind of maintain it as natural habitat. There is, you know, some landscaping outside the easement areas, but along the corridor for the majority of the easement, it is natural habitat.
What happened during the building permit process? That conservation easement was allowed to be basically developed?
Right. So, when we were looking at the initial development of the subdivision, so prior to the house being built, we had the sound wall as a condition to be constructed on the site due to the location along East Roseville Parkway. It does contradict itself in having a sound wall built and disturbed within the conservation easement area. And then, following the initial development of the house, that easement was either never discovered by the property owner, or never disclosed to them, and they basically maintained that area with landscaping. So, it really wasn't until someone wanted to come in and get a building permit that they may have discovered that, to maybe build a house, or shed, or something in the backyard.
Any other questions?
Are there any consequences to violating that agreement? That area was supposed to be undisturbed, and it obviously looks very disturbed.
Right. So, staff in reviewing this didn't really see the, being that there's a wall there that the landscaping has been maintained over 15 years, it's highly unlikely this area, it is fenced in as a backyard. It would not function very well as natural wildlife habitat, being that it is segregated from the Linda Creek, which is located off-site over here. It, it's not contiguous with the walls and fencing that's existing.
And previous landowners should have come in and asked for that to be overturned.
Right.
Rather than just going in on their own and making those changes.
Correct. Yeah, so we are dealing with a new property owner who would essentially like to put in a pool and some residential uses, and really, you know, fix that the conservation easement has been disturbed, it hasn't been used properly. So, by abandoning that portion of it, we're still maintaining the Linda Creek corridor along the eastern, on the other side of the property. We would just essentially be giving him the function of his backyard back.
And this, I guess, because it's part of the larger easement, we're not setting precedence or doing anything that would lead the golf course to believe that, that they can start doing what they want within that same easement?
Yeah, I understand that. So, at this point, Lot 72 is the only residential lot that has the conservation easement running over property line. The rest of the golf course area is, does have the easement remaining. We wouldn't propose that to be removed or abandoned. I guess if the HOA or someone wanted to come in and request that, we would review that, but I don't anticipate this having a, sort of trickle-down effect on any other properties.
Okay, thank you.
Why does the easement on either side of Linda Creek?
It is 100, approximately 100 feet.
Let me see, so the boundary of the easement now would be the property line?
Correct. So, by abandoning the easement here, then the new conservation easement would end right along the property, eastern property line boundary.
Is it, I guess it's unlikely that the county's going to accept the dedication?
No, it's in perpetuity, but in the last 15 years, we have not, you know, accepted that offer, dedication for the easement. I'm not sure if that was something we want to keep open, and, you know, down the road if this use ever changed. It appears that the golf course has been maintained as a golf course over the last 15 years as well.
I guess I hear you. I'm just kind of puzzled why, why it's not being resolved. It seems like it's being just left open.
As far as someone maintaining the easement?
No, as far as the county accepting the dedication.
Accepting it. Yeah, I'm not sure exactly why we, we wouldn't accept it, other than lack of resources to maintain such a large area.
Also, the county would have to maintain it?
Yes, we would, by accepting the easement, we would essentially be maintaining that area as a conservation easement.
Okay, well, that, that kind of answers it.
Does it?
All right. Any other questions? Thank you, Delaney. Would the applicant like to get up and add to what's been said so far?
Good morning, Carrie Bowler. I really don't, I think Delaney has done a wonderful job, been great to work with, and I appreciate your guys' reviewing this and consideration to our request. I have nothing to add.
Any questions for our applicant?
Questions for me?
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, any members of the public wanting to speak on this item?
Could you put the recommendation?
Seeing, seeing none, we'll close that portion of the hearing and bring it back to the commission.
Actually, a question, I think, for staff, maybe. It appears that you didn't have the process in place to limit the building permit when it was issued 15 years ago, but it appears now with a swimming pool, you do have that easement shown, so. I'm concerned that in reviewing projects in the future, those kinds of easements are identified and not allowed to be approached upon?
Yeah, I believe that the sound wall was a part of the improvement plans of the overall subdivision, so it really wasn't a property owner coming in to build. And as far as the existing landscaping and sort of flatwork that you see out there, that wouldn't have come in for a building permit, so staff or county wouldn't have really been notified unless they did come in to get something with an official building permit. So unfortunately, that area did get maintained with domestic landscaping when, you know, it was meant to be preserved as natural habitat.
So, are there procedures now to inform property owners that there's an easement, and they should not be?
It should be with their title information when you purchase the home. I mean, that should be disclosed. Now, if people don't read it, I'm not sure if that's.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. No other questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion. Finding that the project is categorically exempt from environmental review per section provisions of Section 15305 of California Environmental Quality Act, that lines from Section 18, 36.070 of the Plaster County Environmental Review Ordinance. Minor alterations in land use limitations in that the abandonment of a portion of the conservation easement, an update to 100-year floodplain location will not result in the creation of a new parcel, or changes to land use and destiny.
Second. Motion and a second. Roll call, please, Sue.
I have a motion from Mr. Cannon, a second by Mr. Nader. So, a vote from Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Thank you.
And recommend the approval of the request for subdivision map modification, PLN 19-00290, to allow for the abandonment of a portion of a conservation easement located along the eastern property line, and update the location of the 100-year floodplain on Lot 72 of the Residence at Granite Bay Golf Club subdivision, subject to the findings and recommended conditions of approval found in the staff report.
Second. Motion and a second.
A first from Mr. Cannon, a second by Mr. Nader, and a vote from Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to our 10:15 item. We're rolling right along here. Mr. Ag.
Well, good morning, Chairman Moss, Commissioners. Tim Wagner, Deputy Director here with SEDRA. I'm also the county's chief building official, and just proud today, and really appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with you and present, really, the great work that my team has been accomplishing over the last several years. And I say "team," really made up of three teams today, and I'll talk about each of those individually, and a potential fourth team you've been hearing a lot about lately, including the Short-Term Rental Program. Although until we have approval from the Board, we are not developing a team here yet. But I'll start off really quickly, just sharing with you a bit about the Building Department. You know, the Building Department has a unique responsibility to enforce the California Code of Regulations. Many of us know that as the California Building Code. That includes everything from these days, including an energy code, the Cal Green Code, Wild and Urban Interface, which is what we so come to enjoy during our fire seasons, protecting our homes these days, and a variety of other construction codes, including even these days, through the Green Code, is waste management diversion when we are doing recycling for new construction, to make sure that a certain percentage of that byproduct is actually recycled and reused. The team additionally completes post-disaster assessments, so after we have a disaster of some nature, many of you might remember the 49 Fire many years ago, the significant propane leaks, and ultimately, one home exploding in Serene Lakes in around 2011. We've had significant snow in a couple of years, the last several years, including about two years ago. Somewhere around 80 service lines in the Tahoe area were knocked down because of heavy snow, and so my teams are deployed out after that to, A, do an initial assessment to determine what the extent of the damage is, and if it's safe for personnel to get back in there, whether to collect their own personal belongings, or to make, make remedy of whatever that might look like, so to get the, the building, whether it's residential, commercial, back online, so people are able to use it as they've come to expect. We've done some pretty good things with, with the post-disaster assessment and returning people back to their homes. One of the items with the 49 Fire, you know, that was a September Fire, late August/September Fire, and we were able to get the first homeowner back in their home before Christmas that year in December, and it was pretty amazing. The state, as a matter of fact, was quite impressed themselves, and commented to me that they had yet to see something like that occur in the state of California, so we were, we're very proud of that. I also want to share with you about co-compliance, formerly known as code enforcement, and I distinguish the difference because, you know, our Board of Supervisors really wants compliance efforts approach to private property, land use, and those type of items. And so, what do we do today? Well, we investigate and enforce county code violations, and intended to maintain community harmony, harmony and safety. And so, while we do receive complaints that are required, we're required to have a written complaint from the community. We don't take anonymous complaints today. We do protect the reporting party. We do have some state law provisions that provide the guidance to us, that we can secure and maintain that reporting party. It allows the integrity of the system to be maintained, so people don't feel threatened or retaliate, feel like they'll be retaliated against should they, they make a complaint. And while I talk about an overview here, I'll get more specifically into some of the nuts and bolts and some real details about the work. into some of the nuts and bolts and some real details about the work we've done this last year. Cannabis enforcement, I distinguish that by enforcement because we don't have a compliance effort with that. What that is, is you get 72 hours to bring your cultivation into compliance with the county, and I'll speak a little bit more about that in a bit. But that's a little more of a law enforcement look and feel. We respond pretty quickly. We give a very limited amount of time, and then we issue citations pretty quickly as well, which I'm proud to say, again, in our second, well, third year. This year, again, we haven't had to issue a citation, but I'll talk about that a little more. And then vacation rental home compliance, again, something the board is pondering now. Should that come around, my team looks like we will have an enforcement effort with that. And so we're looking at what that might look like from a employment standpoint, maybe a couple of officers. As of now, it sounds like the board is considering that to be really an eastern county provision where it's going to be above 5,000 foot in elevation. So we don't imagine having to do anything down here on the west slope at this point in time. So the building department, let's talk a little bit about that. Currently today, and this is both offices, I have folks here as well as folks that run out of Tahoe City, we issue about 5,800 permits last fiscal year. So our fiscal year, as you know, begins and ends July 1st. And so about 5,800 permits we issued last year of those, 348 new homes. I did bring some statistics with me because I thought you might have some interest in what that looks like relative to past years. It's really relatively flat, I call it. It is statistically down about 6%, but in my world, 6% is, meh, that's not a significant change. But if you want to really compare that to, or excuse me, new homes, or no, total permits, thank you, I'm still on total permits. So that's down 6%. And if you look at where we were in comparison to the Great Recession, we issued about 3,900 permits in that 2010 era. So you can see substantially up from that number. Total permits, we manage about 12,000 active permits. Our permits here in the county are good up to four years. So initially, you're issued a permit for two years, but then you have an opportunity for one-year extension after that, and then for three years, and then ultimately for the fourth-year extension, should you provide a justifiable cause. And really, that's we want to see what might have prevented that from continuing on. Many times here, as you could imagine, it's the elements, right? We're building hillside or we're building in snow region. We're building down here in an area that might be prone to flooding or other elements when we get in the winter time. And so folks have to slow down or stop and do winterization and things to that effect. So we want to provide that and make sure. Historically, if we look across the codes across the nation, those years are typically good for one year, and then they continue on with good faith efforts. But we took a little different approach, and it's really worked well for us in managing these. But 12,000 active permits is a pretty big number. And then, you know, jumping ahead, we, in this same fiscal year, had a value, increased construction value in the county of about $330 million worth of projects that we were involved in in one year. And that's a pretty huge and significant effort, as you can imagine. They might be asking about new homes. You know, new homes are up about 3% from last year, although really down 19% from our 1617. So we've had some incline and slight declines, and now we're coming back up slightly. But if you would see that in comparison to the Great Recession, again, up about 35%. So pretty good jump in those numbers.
Can I ask a question on that?
Please, yes.
Where are you seeing those new homes? Are they pretty scattered throughout the county? Any concentration west or east of those?
They are, yeah, Commissioner Nader. They are spread out pretty much across the county. You know, we do have some subdivision activity going on down off of baseline in that area. Maris Camp, over the last few years in Tahoe, you know, there were about 385 lots up there that went fast and furious, and we're pretty much done in there now, although lots have been sold by the developer a couple of years ago. And so, yeah, we are seeing a lot of custom homes and those type of things, still activity going on. Granite Bay still has a lot going on. We're still seeing some pretty significant homes on that Sierra College route that are going in over there.
So the cost of construction doesn't seem to dampen enthusiasm for building?
That's a difficult, that's difficult for me to comment. And the reason I say that is, we do hear from the builders, you know, we do engage with the BIA, and we are hearing those sorts of things. And we see that incremental cost, increased cost with each code, you know, it seems like every code cycle, we're increasing the cost of construction by somewhere between $10,000 and $20,000. And that starts to push people out of the market. They're unable to sustain that just added value because they have to come up with 20% of that difference, and those might be the things that break the camel's back. So it's difficult. So we are hearing that. But at the same time, you know, we are in a dire need for housing. And so I think there's a lot of great efforts by our builders, designers, and the BIA to really support construction, particularly in Placer County, and to do what we can to move through. But as you know, these are mandated codes by the state. And so we, as the county, even though many times we agree with the provisions, there are some provisions we don't agree with, we have no choice. We have to implement those. So...
I might have a question, too.
Sure.
I often wonder, it seems like we've approved a lot of potential sites here in the Auburn area. Forest Hill has got some, and it seems like they have trouble getting going in this area, I guess versus the east side of the, west side of the county. Do you have any ideas on what's going on with these approved subdivisions that just kind of sit there?
So I can only give you some anecdotal information, which is that, you know, builders these days are not interested in putting a lot of spec product out there. So while pre-Great Recession, they would build spec homes and have a hope for a buyer and do some of these, they're not really interested in taking a lot of that risk. So I'm hearing that's holding back a little bit. So in the smaller subdivisions, they may not want to build a home or two that people get an idea of what that concept is. So we're seeing a bit of that. We're also seeing an interest in smaller housing product, right? And so while that's not what we experienced in Maris Camp, because that was some of our largest product we've ever built here in the county, we are seeing folks that are looking at like the Rioelo Vineyard and some of these folks that have smaller housing product as kind of our future. So as Placer Vineyards, Placer Ranch, some of these other subdivisions, Bickford Ranch come on, we're hopeful that some of the smaller lots, smaller product are going to inspire some of that growth. It's just very difficult. You know, realtors tell me that their folks are concerned about the economy as well, and they don't want to get out in front of that. And we know the market's in a really great place right now, and they're just not sure when that's going to turn. So it's tentative. People aren't taking a lot of risk, and that's really what I'm seeing these days.
Well, I think something that we've seen is a lot of extensions, asking for extension, have more extension. And I'm wondering if it's infrastructure costs, that the requirements of infrastructure, whether it's sewage or water or roads, maybe bringing a lot of that because it just doesn't...
That's correct. And, you know, Cedar's working really hard at that. So we're trying to put the CFDs in place and try to figure out how to build some of that infrastructure in areas so that we can encourage that type of a growth. But again, it's a balance, and there's funding mechanisms and a lot of elements to that. So we are, we are doing the best that we can, and it does take a partnership, and hopefully we can get some of this stuff built.
I know. I've often wondered if maybe it's partially because it's easier to attract investors when you're down in the west side of the county versus up here in Auburn or Forest Hill where you have more difficult terrain to deal with.
Yeah, and I think Commissioner Nader brings up a good point. You know, a lot of the, you know, western communities have existing infrastructure that's in the ground. And so it's easy to do what I call plug and play, where you get up, you get up in the foothills here and further up, and you just don't have a lot of that public infrastructure. So people are putting quite a few systems in themselves, and there are substantial costs with that. If you imagine if you build on a lot these days that is well-driven potable water and a septic system, you have those initial costs. Now, you would have connection fees and so forth, too, right, if you went to a public system. But then with the fire suppression system requirements, there's a lot of backup and redundancy that's required on the potable water side now to make sure that the fire suppression system goes. So you can add $10,000 to $20,000 pretty quickly when you get into the fire sprinkler systems, because you have to have a generator that runs a pump that kicks on, that pulls from a storage tank that'll make sure you have your GPM. So there's just added elements that can be challenging to overcome. You know, just to close up my statistical discussion about the building department, you know, about in commercial, which I figured you would be interested in, we're down about 8% this year from last year and down 17% from the Great Recession. And I get asked this question all the time, how could commercial be down? Well, again, my view of it is that during the Great Recession, what we had is a lot of businesses that went out of business. And so people were jockeying and vying for viable space when the lease rate was the lowest it could. So I would tell you, in that 2009 through, really, 2012, we were seeing amazing commercial activity going on as people were moving from tenant space to tenant space and trying to grab the new available one that's on the corner or that's got good access or is visible. So we saw a lot of that happening when we were seeing businesses and areas going vacant. And that slowed down a bit. And I will talk to you a little bit, though, even though I've mentioned this is down 8%, you're going to be amazed here at the number of commercial projects that we have underway. We do what we call our pioneer program, and I'll share with you, I have a flyer here to share with you in a little bit. But under the pioneer program, we have, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 projects loaded up right now that exceed our 5 million threshold. And I'll be honest with you, most of these exceed 10 million. And that's where we had a contract with the Board of Supervisors directly for that project to have plan check and inspection done by one of the private firms that we have on contract. And what that does is allows 24/7 inspections. For example, like with the Ritz Carlton, they were pouring concrete in the middle of the night, in the middle of a snowstorm. They're pouring significantly high vertical walls, and they need to keep going. And it doesn't matter what the weather is, they keep pumping stuff up the hill. So for these big buildings, even like the Auburn Marriott, same thing, they need to keep moving, they need to keep going to keep the consistency and quality of the construction up. And I just don't have the teams to do that. So we contract with these private firms. So to share with these, we have the Auburn Marriott Hotel, which we're hoping to get open pretty soon here. The Amazing Facts Church, if you're not aware of that, it's on Sierra College. It's a really very large mega church. Again, Placer County Fairgrounds, the event center down there, we're significantly involved in that. The Placer County is building a new coroner's office, and we're involved in that as well. Across the street, we have the Hearthstone Senior Living Center, and as you see, some of the homes that are going in today. And we have a Well Quest Senior Living Center that's been approved, I believe that's down in Granite Bay. Now, we have Vian Enterprises, which is 100,000 square foot aerospace parts manufacturing company that's building a facility here in North Auburn, and that's underway today. In Tahoe, we have the Tahoe City Lodge, which we hope to see underway before long, and Pump Jacks as well. So as you can see, even though I mentioned we're downside, that we do have some really large, great development that is occurring on our commercial and to support our economic and sustainable future.
You said, aside from the third-party plan checks, you're actually doing the inspections through third parties now, too?
For these particular projects, we line them up both with plan check inspection. Our contract allows them to do both of those. Now, we administer that, and we're greatly involved from a management perspective to make sure that we're maintaining the quality that we would expect in co-compliance. But no, we have private firms that are greatly engaged with that. And we do, we've just, I'll tell you, we've met with another company lately, which name I won't divulge, and they're very excited about our ability to overcome really the barriers here in California to get development started as quickly as we can. You know, these projects, the great thing about these pioneer projects is they get to go negotiate, interview with each of the firms, choose the firm that they think can best meet their needs, and then they can negotiate turnaround time costs and all of these other things upfront. So they know what time material looks like. They know what the end zone's going to look like for them. And right now, we have not had one of these projects over my tenure that haven't met their goal of schedule to be planned, submitted, and approved and start inspections. You know, like with Auburn Marriott, we've had some difficulties over the last couple of months getting some things done, but that's not been an outcome of the process. It's just construction in itself. So, yeah, I think we're doing great by this to really co-olate my team with construction schedules and make sure that we're keeping things moving the best that we can. It brings down the cost, keeps them on budget, and it's a great, you know, even a greenhouse grass reduction, if you would imagine, because people aren't driving around as much, because we're enabling them to stay on site as we keep things moving. So we're doing some good stuff.
You know, one of the questions frequently comes up, and I don't know if you're doing anything with it yet, but that parcel just to the north of Target?
Yes.
Is anything going on there?
So I'm not familiar with what's going on over there. I've seen some activity, and then I don't see activity. And so, to be honest with you, I'm not certain.
Guess they're not talking to you yet, are they?
Well, you know, I get that question a lot, and it's funny because I just unfortunately don't see six, every 6,000 of these that come through. So many times they come in, my team's working on it, and I don't know about it. And then I'll get a question, I'll look into it, and then I'm familiar with it. So apologies, I couldn't answer that question for you today.
You could probably jump in on that one, Tim. So Auburn Creek side is the project, I think you're talking about, the commercial project. And they're actually going to be, I believe, at the next commission meeting requesting an extension of time. So at that time, you'll be able to hear directly from the applicant on, you know...
Okay, good.
...the timeline.
Question? Homewood Mountain Resort.
Yes.
What's the status of that? I see the owner periodically, and he says, oh, yeah, we're still struggling, you know, we're in lawsuit or something's happening. It's been, what, three years, four years? And I just wonder, is it gone now, or is it still?
So what you described is the information I know as well, is that, yeah, there was some lawsuit. I understood there was some resolution to that, but, you know, they had a fire a couple of years ago there, and we thought that might encourage them to begin that development. But I'm just not familiar with, again, with what's going on with that.
Looks like EJ might know a thing about that one also.
You keep bringing up projects. So Homewood, the entitlements are still alive and well and aren't expiring anytime soon. But the, I think the owners are looking at the business model that was approved at the time to see if that's reflective of today. So there's been conversations going on about possible modifications to that project, but nothing official at this time.
Okay. The reason I ask these kinds of questions is I also serve on DRPA for Placer County. And quite often, there's this attitude that, oh, you've approved this there, and you've approved this over there. And most of the time, they never get built. And I say, well, are we prejudicing new development because DRPA is saying you've already got all these things approved, but nothing's happening? And I get curious time to time, wondering, are we shooting ourselves in the foot in a sense?
So I can tell you, I've not been made aware that there are any county barriers to those projects. And, you know, we, the building department is here with open arms welcoming them when they're ready. So I, you know, I think there's a lot of dynamics going on out there, the economy, as EJ said, scope of the project, and things are changing over time. And so, you know, folks are reevaluating and trying to understand what the future's looking like.
Well, the Homewood one, as an example, I had heard also that they were downsizing or changing the submission somewhat to, I don't know, whether it's financing or for make somebody in the room happy, the league to save Lake Tahoe or whoever. But I just, I was just concerned that that's just an example of a lot of projects in the Tahoe Basin have the same kind of a hurry up and wait attitude. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, and I think our Board of Supervisors has a little bit of that opinion, too, that we, why can't we get this stuff built? And I tell you, here in Cedar, we are striving hard to get these things built, but it's not always under our control. So... Yep. Yep. So I want to talk a little bit about the improvements that we're making. We've really done some great things over the last years in permit streamlining. And I had an, I have a flyer for you, and I don't know, Sue, if you can share this. And I've made them available on the side table. I didn't know if we were going to have members of the public here. But I thought this was popping up on, I hope it didn't. Somehow I lost it. That's okay. So anyways, under permit streamlining, I just wanted... Sorry, I just wanted to share with you, I did have this fly up here on the screen, so it may do it later if I got my timing messed up. But this is a flyer that we have that's available that really talks about all of our street line, permit streamlining line, permit streamlining provisions that we have. We do, and I'll walk through each of these, starting with PASS, the first green box on the left-hand side. That's a program that us building officials here in the Sacramento Valley went together on many years ago in an effort to try to accommodate permit streamlining. We wanted to see what we could do to try to expedite commercial development. Many of us have already done some things on the residential side, like master plans and some things of that effect, but how could we facilitate commercial development? We're continuing to hear from GSAC and other folks that, you know, the building code's kind of getting in the way, and California regulation is an impediment to development. So we, building officials, thought we would do everything we possibly could, so we developed this program called PASS. And really what it does is it allows, and the reason it's called a pre-qualified architectural system, is that what happens is we've developed a comprehensive checklist that the designer goes through, completes that checklist when they submit their plans to us, that really is the roadmap to success for them. So it identifies kind of all the codes particular to a project of their scope, and then they can just show us on which sheet that they've complied with that, so we're not thumbing through, trying to figure out the methodology of the designer, where the particular co-compliant elements are, and it really does expedite this. Now, the unfortunate thing is we've had this in place in the county for several years now, I have yet to have a developer take me up on it. And maybe the only reason for that is, is we have such a good Pioneer Program, which I'll talk about again in a moment, but that's my only reason I can think about that. Roseville's had, have had a couple go through their program, but again, not a lot of takers on that. So while we have it out there and available, not a lot of takers. On Better, the reason we call it Better is you see there, buried in the middle is the TI, so this is what really this is, is for tenant improvements. Again, we want development, we want to encourage economic development here, we want to make sure that when a suite becomes available in a strip center or in any other kind of commercial establishment, office or what have you, that we're getting that tenant space filled as quickly as we can. I used to work for a commercial developer, I was a development director, and my real estate team would come to me and be frustrated, pulling their hair out, because they would have some impediment to a tenant getting into a space, because they had so much personal collateral they had to put in, they had all these hoops they had to go through, they had to borrow money to do their improvements. By the time they did that, they said, now I'm going to sit here for 60 days with no doors open, and I can't sustain all that loan and personal costs that I have. And then when they open their doors, business is slow for a little bit, many times, or they get a good spike, and then stabilizes, and they're not able to unravel that, and next thing you know, their doors are closed. And so we thought we were going to collapse that initial period of time of them, of a tenant being interested in a space, and getting them into that space as quick as they can. So really what happens with this Better Program, a designer calls up, an architect calls up, makes an appointment with one of my senior plan checkers, tells us they want to do a plan check on a particular suite, and we say, great, we make an appointment with them, they come into the office, we sit down with them in a conference room table, my plan checker does the plan check right there with them, many times the designer can just annotate additions or corrections or deletions right on their plan, we stamp it approved, they walk out that same day with a permit many times. So we've already done, I think in the last year, we've done five or six of these, we have it advertised in our lobby, and we have it scoped in such a way that we can issue the permit that quickly, because we don't have, we're not allowing facilities that bring in other departments. And what I mean by that is it's an existing space, so they don't have to go through the rigmarole about sewer connection, traffic, fees, all these other things that might go into place for mitigation. They don't, we don't allow commercial kitchens, because then that environmental health's going to get in, and then they're going to have a permit requirement with that, and commercial kitchens typically have a lot of accessibility components to that. And so it takes some more time for us to look at working spaces and access and these type of things. We don't allow hazardous materials, because again, a lot of time to really look at that and get the fire department involved. And please don't tell me that I think that these folks are impediment to our system when I mention these other departments, they have an absolutely important role, but we've tried to scope projects to try to get, again, just that suite in the middle of a strip center that wants to go from a scrapbook store to a shoes, shoe sale, you know, new shoe sales place. And we don't see a lot but customer centers and shelving and things of that effect, we want to make that turnover as quick as we can, and we've seen this program do that.
Is there an additional cost for that?
No additional cost. And our feeling with it is, is we're going to do it, we're going to do the work now or the work later, and why not sit down at the table now? So it's been of great value. Online permitting and electronic plan check, we've had online permitting, I think I'm jumping ahead a little here, for a while, and it's working very well. We are getting ready to expand that out to all users, we've been constraining that to contractors only, just because we really want to get the system up and running, but we are accepting all permit types, we have accept commercial product, we are doing an amazing amount of solar through online, which is really helpful for folks not having to come in. Counter services, we have, we have what I call a drive-through and a, and an over-the-counter service process where folks can come in, whether it's a heating and air contractor or homeowner wants to do a window change out or build a shed, many times we just look at those and issue a permit right over the counter. If we can get those within 15 to 20 minutes, plan checking at the counter, we just do that. You know, unfortunately, yesterday I had a gentleman that emailed me, was quite frustrated, apparently he was waiting in our lobby, and sounded like we had a two-hour wait for our over-the-counter system. I verified that, we had two people working the counter that day, so we were moving them through as fast as we could, we just had that many people that had that interest in that kind of product line. So online permitting is an offset to that, and we hope more folks take advantage of that as a means of not standing in line here. And then the Linked Program, that's something that we started two years ago, that's with the Placer County Contractors Association, and really what that is, is I liken it to DMV and AAA, right? So AAA many times does some of the administrative stuff for the DMV, you can go to the, you can go into your AAA office and you can renew your car tags, you can do a lot of those kind of things. Well, we thought, what a great place, and Jeff Henry, the Vice President with the Placer County Contractors Association, I've been talking about how to better leverage his plan room that he has down there. It's where they accept plans, digitize them, and then put them out to bid all across the state of California. And so he has, you know, A, representing the contractors, B, has all these plans and work that needs to be done by the contractors, and we thought, what better place than to put this like, this administrative system in there? So we trained their staff, got our systems on their computers, you can go today, whether you're a homeowner or a contractor, to the Placer County Contractors Association down in Roseville, they'll accept your application for a building permit, they'll take your payment, they'll take your plans, they'll do the front counter work for us, and we've had that in place for, again, for, you know, I think we're going on our second year here, or, and again, limited interest in that, and we're just not sure why that. Jeff's done a great job advertising, we've got it splashed all over our pages, we have this handout, but again, not a lot of interest in that. Just want you to see, we do have them out there. And last but not least, our Pioneer Program, as I shared earlier, it's our $5 million program, folks who have projects, commercial projects larger than that, we line them up with this, do a direct contract with the board, and they get 24/7 service, whatever they want, and it's a negotiated time and cost. And so it really does work out well and keeps projects, projects on time. So hopefully you see some value in that, we certainly do, and look forward to folks taking advantage of our programs. We are expanding electronic plan check, we are doing some of that today. Some of our difficulty is it doesn't interface very well with our permitting system, and so when we start accepting more electronic plan checks, version controls, you can imagine, would be a significant element for us, as we start to see, you know, not 5,000 plans, but a large number of plans coming in, we don't want to be managing that, we want our permitting system to manage that version control, so our staff knows they're working on the latest version when they get those approved. So we are moving through that, and we're hoping to, over the next year, to have a much more robust electronic plan check system. Automated inspection routing, this is pretty cool, we developed this in the springtime. You know, one of the challenges I've always had, and I tell you, I've been with the county 13 years now, and, you know, I came just at about the time the recession was hitting pretty hard, and one of the comments I continued to get was, you know, questions about the number of stops, how efficient I was being with my inspection staff, the amount of time I'm giving them to perform inspections, the quality of the inspection, and a variety of things related around those field services. And so we've done many models ourselves, we had an internal program, we've automated things as well, giving them routing sheets and so forth that have really helped streamline. But all in all, we still couldn't get to the end of the day to tell if an inspector could do more than 10 or 12 locations, we call them stops, in a day, if that was reasonable, they do more than 12. Sometimes we felt they could, because they might have had a significant number of re-roofs or solars or things that don't take a lot of time, and maybe they could do more than that, and sometimes maybe not. Maybe they have a huge frame inspection on a 10,000 square foot home in Granite Bay that's, or up in the hill that's on topography, that's going to take a lot of time. And so we put together a waiting program. So what we had inspectors do is track their time, so a time-motion study, and had them track their time for each element, and we broke them up in categories. If it's under 3,000 square feet in size, they got a limited, more limited amount of time. If it's over 3,000 square foot in size, we knew it became more complicated, and they would get a little more time with that. So for framing, for a big home, they might get an hour, for a framing inspection, for a small home, they might only get a half an hour. For a solar inspection, they might only get a half an hour, for a swimming pool, they might only get 20 minutes. We did that for each product type that we did, we built that in a database, put that into our system, and then we purchased, or have gone into contract with the firm that developed this system. And I don't know how well you can see it there, but this is called WorkWave, and it's a private firm that routes many folks, like FedEx and UPS and other service providers, they're predominantly in the East Coast, but they're working their way across the nation here. And this is something that I've always been, piqued my interest, and we're getting close to, you probably see on, if you watch any TV, you know, you see Safiht Autoblast come on, and you can now click on their app, and you can see the Safiht Auto Gas truck coming your way, so you know when they're going to service you. Well, that's actually where we're going. This will allow our consumer, we're hoping in the next year, to get an alert when this truck's en route, because we've identified by this, and you can't really see it in the map up on the screen, but each of these red dots have a numerical allocation to them, and they're in series, and it tells us, based on the waiting, how many stops each person can do every day. So if you look up the top here, it tells me this is the inspector, here's what their times are, and each one of these is a location, the dotted lines in between are their drive times, and how long they have. And so each of them get out to, like this person's all the way at the end of their day, but you can see they're doing a significant number, more than 12 inspections that day. So we're maximizing our field staff, we're making sure our costs are in balance, we're now going to go to another customer interface where they're going to be able to see when the inspector's coming, again, to keep down greenhouse gas emissions, keep our economy going, because we don't have superintendents and contractors and owners driving back and forth, wondering when the inspector's been there. They're going to get an automatic email about the results of their inspection, so they'll know the inspector was there, I got a results of my inspection through email or another electronic mode, and now they can deploy their subcontractor that, A, on my frame inspection, I need my plumbing contractor needs to go back and make revisions to his plumbing system. Rather than have each contractor drive over there to try to figure out what the inspector said, we can dial it right in specifically on what needs to be done, by who, and when it's being accomplished. So we're really looking forward to this. We've deployed this in Tahoe as well, and that's really going to help us particularly when we get into seasons like now, when the ski resorts start, get going again, and we still have trucks out there on the road, we get these times a day when the ski resorts back up and plug up the highway systems, and my inspectors are stuck in that. So this, we can actually identify when those times are, it will reroute them through different ways, and it uses logic to know what the best efficient route is and how many they can do based upon that route. So some pretty great techniques that we're implementing these days to make sure we're keeping our costs down and being as efficient as we can, but allowing our staff the time to do the work they need to do. We also have online an inspector, an inspector arrival time schedule, and so that's where you can go online, and you can look up, well, what time my inspector's going to arrive today? We give you a two-hour window, and over the last three years, we've implemented this, we've actually had Butte County, and I think Sack County might be looking at this now, Folsom is doing it, other communities have followed suit, we post this online, you look up every morning, you can tell when we're coming out there, and again, you don't have to wait around. If you're like me, as soon as I'm waiting around for the service guy, I go to the backyard to turn off a hose, I got to use the restroom, guess who's at the door, or guess who called me, and I missed it. This way you don't miss that. And so it's really working well, it's giving folks that good opportunity to when we're going to be there and when they can get back to work. Right now, we're looking at a video inspection component, something I'm pretty excited about. I think there's a great opportunity for us in certain settings, re-roofs, re-sides, window change outs, electric hot water heaters, re-inspections under certain circumstances, maybe even some solar, we saw a demo yesterday with some solar, and my supervising inspector said, wow, the way you can even see better under the panel than we can, because we can't lay our head down that far when you put the camera under there. So we're really seeing some advantage to this. So we saw a demo of a company yesterday, we're actually testing Skype for Business ourselves, to see if we can't build our own model, and I hope to have something like this up and running in the next couple of months, again, to bring efficiency, to streamline our inspection services, and many times you don't really need the inspector there, you're just showing us it, and we confirm, yes, sir, that's it, yes, ma'am, that's what we needed to see, and then we can approve it right online, they get an indication through the, through email or whatever mode they've asked for us that they've been approved, and off we're all running again, off to our next, our next item. Okay, boy, I'm, I've got a lot going here, I apologize, and I'll speed her up. You know, co-compliance, we have a lot going, you know, 300 active cases, I'll run through these right now, this last year, we got about 53 incidental camping cases, and this is what our sites many times look like, folks have abandoned things, campers, they building, you know, they have tents and all kinds of other fortresses that they build out there, they just have no care for our environment, they leave them in a pretty bad condition. So we're out there actively working on those, so again, 53 of those that we have going today. The next thing we have up is, we're working through 40 abandoned vehicles, so across our parcels, we see all types of vehicles, RVs and so forth, that are just dumped, people take their tags, they grind the VIN numbers off, they do everything they can, they don't want them. We do have an abandoned vehicle program today, and we will take that car for you if it's truly abandoned, and we try to find the owner, and if not, then we work with the sheriff's department, and we ultimately tag and tow that. And we are looking at a DMV program, maybe over the next year, but we'll see, we'll see where that goes. The next coming up is about 68 accessory storage, and this is where people, we have a lady down off of Sunrise, that she has about an acre and a half, literally was full like this, we took, I can't tell you how many dumpsters out of there, we're pursuing her now for about $35,000, abatement cost for us to clean up that parcel, but it was pretty bad, it was next to a small preschool, and we were always getting concerns from the parents dropping off their kids about the activities over there, and vermin and all kinds of other things. We've also been dealing with, as my collage comes forward here, 287 improper uses, and that's things much like this, people that are living in sheds, folks who are misusing their property as a business location, we have folks who take their, their residential parcel, and they might be running, you know, a trucking business from that, and the neighbors don't like that, they might be running a landscaping business from that, and they're bringing home too much material or employees meeting at their home and things like that, to that effect. And so we're always, we're always looking over these and trying to get our parcels back into compliance with the intended zoning district looks like.
Tim?
Yes?
How is staffing in that area? Can you, do you have the people that you need to make sure that you can be responsive? And that's a lot of cases.
It is a lot of cases, I would agree with that, Commissioner Nader, what we're experiencing now is officers running somewhere between 60 and 80 cases. That's a bit high, in my opinion, and so, you know, I do look forward to the opportunity to get a few more staff in there over time, I understand it's a balance and priorities, but in particular, you know, we are seeing increase in our request for service, and so I'm hoping that I can get some commensurate staffing.
I would think there'd be a priority to this, because a lot of this can relate to creating dangerous conditions for the community.
It can.
And certainly, health hazards as well. Is it, where's the holdup to get more?
That's a very difficult question.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. I would say, you know, we have made some requests for staff, and I do understand in some of the years we've made those requests, there have been other significant interest in priorities of the board, and so I don't always fully understand those priorities and respect that. So, but seeing what I'm seeing now, I can share with you that I will, again this year, make a request for additional officers through the budget process.
How many?
I want to more closely evaluate really what I'm looking like when I get into that, so another couple months out, I'll look at that and where I am with my current staffing to tell you what that number is, but, you know, with the winery-brewery ordinance update and some of the stuff I'm hearing from events and things like that, it could be in that neighborhood of two, in particular if there's interest in us resurrecting kind of our weekend and evening programs that we have. And so that's why I'm being a little bit soft on that answer, because I'm looking at several other elements as well, and so I'll be respectful with the board and make some requests based upon what I'm seeing.
Thank you. I was going to ask you about that, you just mentioned it, the event center and wineries, and so we frequently hear about that here, as far as code enforcement. Sometimes the sheriff can go on a weekend, but the sheriff's got other priorities and really can't give it much attention, or doesn't have the equipment to catch the sound and that kind of stuff.
Right.
But at any rate, I guess one of the questions, now this is complaint-driven.
Correct.
Correct. Correct. And so if the winery is having more than, more events than they should have, or if they're running a little bit later in the night than they should, and the neighbors are, I mean, there's really no control over that at all as far as you're just relying on the winery owner to be honest, I guess, is what we're doing.
Well, there's certainly an element of that, right? And any businesses, for the business owner to be responsible with the laws of the area in which they're conducting business. So we do request that, right? But I am hearing from some members of the board that they are looking at this, and there is some interest in potentialists having a little bit more of a response. I've even heard from one board member that maybe they have interest in us being proactive and just checking on some of these during the weekends and evenings and so forth. But again, there's a five-member board, and we have to have a pretty robust discussion around what that looks and feels like.
Well, it's kind of similar to the Tahoe ordinance that's being developed, I guess.
The STR, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I can tell you, we had a weekend program for a while. The officers worked on, they were on call, so they were standby, and then when they got a call, they'd respond out and see what that was. We did that for a period of time, and we really only had two, I would call them chronic complainers, two folks who continually complained about the same places over and over again. And we'd gone out there, and we have, we are purchasing new noise meters now. We did have our existing noise meter recalibrated and tested, and we did some testing and tried to help the neighbor that was complaining, see that what they were complaining about actually wasn't, didn't exceed the threshold of noise. So sometimes things are audible, in particular when you get in these microclimate areas, sound travels in very unique ways. And so because you can hear something doesn't necessarily mean that the decibels are over our thresholds, and that's many times what we are experiencing. I can tell you, I live on 16 acres, and my neighbors have acreage next to me, and she's five acres away, and I can hear her talking to her husband in their barn about the need to go buy grain or what have you, and they're just having a normal conversation. It's just quiet and still, and the noise of their voices carrying across acres. So you can imagine if you have somebody that's, you know, they're having a wedding, and I'm sure there's excitement with that, or what, you know, winery might be having an event. And so we're cautious about that, but, you know, going back to this is we're certainly going to be interested if the board is interested in us looking at that.
Okay.
Okay, so six dangerous buildings, again, we have. We've taken down a couple of these buildings that have been damaged or destroyed. This one in particular had a fire in it, and the owners were out of state and didn't want to resolve it, and the neighbors were concerned about it. And so the county actually did a nuisance abatement process and went out there and were able to get this, get this thing removed. Improvements for code, again, Placer Connect, we have an online reporting system, so you can file your complaint online. You can do it through email. You can hand-deliver it in here or mail it to us. We have all means of accepting complaints. We now have taken over the dangerous building program. That was previously an environmental health provision. We just felt with my building department team and so forth, we're better outfitted to do that, as well as we're used to admin hearings and doing these kind of things. So Wesley Nix and Jeff Brown were kind enough to allow me to take that program over. Sometimes I wonder if I should have, but. Nuisance abatement program, again, we've been doing really well and developing good workflows with that. I mentioned the vehicle abatement program, and we're talking about a DMV registration potential with that. The California Highway Patrol has a lot of interest in the county picking that up, and that's where $1 would be added to the, every registered vehicle in the county. That money would go to the county. We would keep that money and use it to abate abandoned vehicles, RVs and those kind of things, get them out of our roadways and off of our private property. So it's something we're looking at, again, as the Highway Patrol has interest in that. It's a bigger program, and I'm, again, you know, tight on resources to evaluate a program right now. My number-two manager left to be the building official in Fairfield a couple of months ago, so I'm flying solo in management, and so sometimes it's difficult to see some of these things.
Vehicle abatement, so does DMV or the CHP still run it? Or if people have a problem, do they call you, or who do they call?
Yeah, so what happens is, you know, on the street, the Highway Patrol handles that, and we handle stuff on private property, and the sheriff's department does as well. But many times what happens is just for vehicle abatement, you know, we get an owner that calls and says they have this abandoned vehicle, or a commercial property owner says somebody's left their car on my property, and we've tried to get ahold of them, we can't. We do some efforts with that, and then the sheriff's office goes out and tags that to their volunteer program for us, and then after that 72-hour period, we send one of our records down there and haul it off. And we go through the process of title and taking care of all that stuff. So, you know, to answer your question, CHP currently handles on the roads. We handle off the roads. We don't have a robust system. We have very limited dollars, so we're cautious about that. But we are starting to see in our hearing as well, the Highway Patrol is sharing with us that they're just seeing increased numbers of these, and we are too. And particularly when it comes to recreational vehicles, those are extremely expensive to dispose of, particularly when you get in some of the older models, because they have asbestos and so forth in them. So the wrecking yards don't want them because they're expensive to tear apart, and they have asbestos mitigation measures they have to do. So part of it is to offset that too, because we're just, we're getting them just dropped along road sides, on railroad property, and places that just are, you know, blight for our community.
Tim, you mentioned about Jeff's departure. You haven't replaced him yet.
No, we're currently looking. Yeah, we're currently looking for.
And you hope to have that. I assume that has fallen on your shoulders, some of it.
Yeah, yeah, pretty much I'm wrestling all horses these days, so. And that's okay. I have some good supervisors that are doing some good things, so we're still getting stuff done. Hazardous vegetation abatement program, again, my team's involved with that. And so while the fire departments are kind of the initial, and fire districts are the initial contacts out there, they get the complaint, the fire district does, they may respond, they might identify if it's a violation of the county's hazardous vegetation ordinance. Should they not gain compliance from the property owner, then they send that document over to my team. My team then pursues that owner, conducts the abatement, goes to the board for lien on the property should the owner not make payment after we do the abatement. And we are looking at, again, I worked with the fire districts last year about potentially enhancing that program, and so you might hear more about us doing that this next year. We're trying to maybe define a little more clearly what a fire hazard looks like outside of that typical 100-foot defensible space, because as I'm learning from the fire districts, it's very interesting when you get topography and how that grade changes and how that 100-foot really should be expanded out because you get that upwell and the embers that are being driven upwind that are way in advance of the fire that are just continuing it to leapfrog. And so other ways of trying to mitigate that, crown, you know, we get crown fires and so forth, trying to deal with that outside of the 100-foot defensible space. So it might be something else that the board could ponder this year should that come back. Another great thing we've done is administrative hearings. So, you know, about five years ago now, the team, all they could do is write a citation and take the individual to the Superior Court system, to the judicial system. To me, there are a lot of negativities with that. One, you have a court system that's a traffic court system that does not understand land use at all, and we had challenges with that. I had a judge that didn't understand the difference between the zoning use designation on the property and the use of the building. I thought because it was outright use on the property, we said, sure, you can do it on the property in a proper facility. You can't just do automotive repair on your personal vehicle by painting in an unapproved booth. You have to have the proper booth to capture the paint and the off spray and all the other things that go with it. And so anyways, it was quite challenging. We've started this administrative hearing process. It allows the owner to be heard by somebody that understands land use law and land use provisions. It's not criminal in nature, and we certainly don't want, you know, land development, you know, or private property issues to become criminal until ultimately necessary, where we need to protect the health and safety of the community. We still have that avenue. And so there, you know, before a hearing officer where they can be heard, it's not so formal. There aren't all the judicial proceedings around that, and so it's a really good forum to be heard, and we're having good outcome from that. And so people are heeding the warnings and the citations and taking good actions, and we're getting good proactive, quick turn rather than elongated process. I'm almost done here, I promise. Cannabis enforcement is one of the other teams I've overseen. As you know, a couple of years ago, the board adopted cannabis regulations in the county, and I do have, again, Sue, if you don't mind, I have available for you what our handout is. It talks all about those provisions and our setbacks and so forth. But I'll share with you, but this last season, again, up into July, about 200, excuse me, this season, we've received about 201 complaints. We've been out and resolved 15,000 plants this year. We've had zero administrative hearings, and so what that means is when we give a 72-hour notice, our cultivators are adhering to that notice, and they're resolving their compliance issues before my team returns 72 hours later. So at this point, although we got really close last week, we have yet to issue administrative citation, and that's a very good thing. That means that the cultivators are being respectful of the process and that we're removing cannabis from our county. We understand some of it's getting loaded up on U-Haul trucks and being moved to counties that are accepting that, and that's fine by us as long as it's, as long as it's leaving Placer County. We also are flying around. This is me and Josh Hunsinger. Really appreciate the sheriff's office and their dedication to this as well, and put a shout out to their pilot out there, Van. He's doing a great job, and I really appreciate their efforts for us. And we go up about 10 times a year. I like to go up in the beginning of the season to kind of assess what it's looking like out there, what my team's up against, and really how many big grows are out there. And I like to do an evaluation at the end of the year, and I haven't been able to do that this year just for other reasons. But we are seeing significant grows, as you can see by these pictures. The next picture I'm going to show you is one of my officers standing in front of a tree. That's not a tree, that's actually a plant. It was somewhere around 12 feet tall. We think they were getting somewhere around four to five, four to five pounds off of that plant there. We estimate this year with the 15,000 plants, a street value, we've added to those, we're somewhere in the $58 million range of illegal cannabis that we've curbed in the county this year. Last year, we were in the $30 million. The year before that, we were pushing up on $30 million. So if you do that math, that's a big number in the last three years of what we've curbed in the county. I'll tell you, a great value with this is that we are seeing a slowdown in neighborhood complaints. So while we had a significant problem in Sheridan, we don't see any grows in Sheridan anymore. When I flew over in the springtime, there was one house that had their six allotted plants in it, and so that's good stuff. It's working. So I gave you the flyer there, and you guys can look that over at your own time, but it is working. And then the short-term rental stuff, I didn't really want to get into that much, but we are prepared and do have a plan in place and are ready to implement that plan as early as January 1st, 2020, should the board have interest in a short-term rental program. So with that, I'm glad to answer any questions. I provide a lot of information, hopefully.
I've got a question for you, Tim. The power houses are driving a whole new industry right now.
Certainly are.
An electrician friend of mine said his phone is ringing off the hook with people wanting to put in a power generator, not just little guys. They want to put in the ones that are fully powering their houses.
20K, yep.
And so I'm wondering if you're seeing that coming in, a lot of permits requesting that or information requesting. And I guess the question I would put out is if this thing, obviously, TGE just recently said this is going to go on for a decade for them to catch up with the work that they need to do to make these lines safe, as they should have done over the last couple of decades already. But this is going to be ongoing. Would it make sense, and maybe you've considered this, of having a sheet that says, okay, if this is something you're thinking about, these are the processes you're going to have to go through to get the permit for this?
You and I are always thinking similarly, and I have to, yeah, this is what, my friend calls me the other night, and he says the same thing. Hey, do I have to get a permit at this, about one of these 20K generators? And he's, has his own business, and he works with automotive industry, so he's an electrician. He does a lot of these things, and he says, I'd like to install this myself. I said, sure, you can, you do it, you do need to go down and get a permit. He says, well, what are all the things I need to go through to permit? And I said, well, I should come over and meet with you. And so that's exactly what I was thinking, is even if we had a template for approval that had what all the requirements are on there, and you just simply have to fill in the gap about what particular generator size you're installing or what its fuel system is, because many of them are propane and so forth. And so then we can look, just look at that critical element and not get into, and really provide that roadmap. So I appreciate the offer. I, too, was thinking very similarly with that, much like I do with our master plans with new homes. No reason we can't have something that somebody could come and just say, I like Model A, and get a permit for that.
Certainly makes your staff much easier, too.
Absolutely.
They explain it every time. You can just hand it out and let people work their way through it.
Absolutely, and I would hope they could even go online and just, and make the payments right from the convenience of their own home.
Great, I'm glad you're going on that journey.
Yeah, thanks for the comment.
Let me see. Periodically, we get involved in administrative hearings involving code, yeah, code enforcement. And so, you know, I think I know what the trigger is, but maybe you could go into that when actually they come to the planning commission.
Sure, sure. So to distinguish it, when we issue an administrative citation, those go to an independent hearing officer. So the planning commission doesn't preside or hear any of those administrative citations. But what the planning commission does get involved in is we do nuisance abatements, right? And so that's when you guys have been involved lately, is when we've had to go down, like on that acreage I explained to you, then you, then the commission did approve and give us the authority to go abate that property. So that's when, that's when we see the commission come and play with co-compliances, those[1718.71]